I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, miscellaneous topics. We've got policy and budget under miscellaneous. I don't think they're miscellaneous. Policy review.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have your little policy update.
I have a pot of coffee.
We have four policy updates for you today, three of which are just what I would consider to be minor changes and then one that's having some language revision. The first is policy 8.41 meal patterns. The changes that are proposed include the addition of a citation 570.981, which is food service programs, to establish food service programs, that sort of thing, and the deletion of 106.06, and then the change from State Board of Education rules to Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services rules, which we've done on all of the food service related policies. And be glad to answer any questions.
So they just changed the names to keep us on our toes? Is that what they did?
Just to bring it up to date and reflect the name of the, keep you on your toes. Being no proposed changes, we'll move this one forward for a workshop. The next one is a little more substantive. This is policy 8.42 free and reduced price meals and meal prices. This, we are proposing a revision. The language that's proposed under section three subsection A, students in grades pre-K through eight who have reached their credit limit will be provided an alternative meal consisting of a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and a milk. Student with a documented peanut allergy will receive a cheese sandwich and a milk. Pre-K through eighth grade students will not have a meal tray taken away from them if they have, and the word "not" has been removed, been identified as reaching their charge limit prior to entering the serving line. And then subsection B would read, which would be with regard to the high school students, high school students who have reached their credit limit will be offered an alternative meal consisting of a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and a milk. A student with a documented peanut allergy will receive a cheese sandwich and milk. Now, we did receive some calls after the Policy Informs Committee, and Mr. Pistone and I discussed some alternative language which basically says the same thing, which is a little clearer, and then we felt like it needs to be easily understood. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Pistone, and I'll pass out the alternative language which basically says the same thing, just to see if it's suitable, and then you can have a conversation.
Hi.
Received a phone call from one of our board members, Ms. Powers, and asked for a little clarification on the wording that we had used when you had two double negatives there. It was a little bit confusing. So what you should have here, I'm hoping I was able to reword it, not changing any the wording, just rewording it, okay? Make it a little bit more easy to understand. And I don't know that I need to read it to you. If you'd like, I can do that, but in subsection A, paragraph three, students in pre-K through eighth grade who have reached their charge limit will be provided an alternative meal consisting of a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and a milk. However, if a student has not been identified as reaching their charge limit prior to entering the serving line, the meal tray will not be taken from the child and their account will be charged accordingly. Maybe just a different way of rewording it, a little bit more clarification, people understand we're not going to take that tray from that child in pre-K through eight.
Roy, the original one, just made it a little clearer. So it would absolutely state that we're not taking that tray from the child, which I think never should happen, and Mr. Pistone agrees also. So I think restating it made it totally clear.
And I guess, just so I understand too, the reason they would have not been identified, is this like, this is the first day, they come through line, no one really knows.
That can happen. Our principals are provided weekly with a list of children who have reached their charge limit, and they do a good job trying to reach those children before they go get into line, okay? Knowing that, honey, and then we'll make sure, we try and do it as discreet as we can to be able to provide them with their meal. But kids fall through the cracks. I mean, it could be hundreds of children, you just don't know at each particular school. Somebody could have already got in line and we did not get to the child, the administration didn't get to the child ahead of time. So no way do we want to take that tray from the child.
And Roy, the other question I was just wondering is, is there a reason we're specifically stating PB and J as opposed to just an alternative meal? And I guess I'm thinking, okay, so let's say you don't have those available that day and you make an alternate choice.
A peanut butter and jelly sandwich is pretty much a standard that's used nationwide. Peanut butter has a lot of protein in it and a lot of good fats to sustain the child throughout the day. Most children will eat a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. It's one of our more popular ones that we serve. We call them crustables, and they love those. That, along with the milk, provides the nutrients that the child really needs at that grade level to sustain them for the rest. If we wanted to go ahead and provide the whole meal, again, then that's more cost associated to the district, which that's entirely up to the board if you wanted something else to go with it.
No, I was just thinking of whether you needed flexibility than to specifically state.
Now, the flexibility, Ms. Powers talked to me, what happens if a child is diabetic? We do a lot in food services to make sure, we do carb counting and things like that. Our nurses are very well aware of that. It's on our website. So if we knew a child had, was a diabetic, obviously we'll go ahead with the peanut butter with the whole grain bread that we serve because it's still nutritious. We would probably leave off the simple carbohydrates, which is the jelly, not wanting their blood sugar to spike where we don't need that to be. But that with the milk, okay, should sustain the child, okay? If they have an allergy to peanut butter, which we do have some children that are that, that's why we put in there, we will give them, at the very bottom, a student with a documented peanut allergy will receive a cheese sandwich and a milk. Again, enough protein, enough fat, enough calories to sustain them throughout the rest of the day till they get home and eat their dinner.
And we're stating in here the peanut allergy, but I couldn't help but see the milk. If I have an allergy to dairy products...
Okay, usually, we don't find many milk allergies. It's usually an intolerance, a little different from an allergy which could put a child into some type of medical condition that we don't want to have. If we were able to see that, then we would substitute that with a juice, okay? What we don't want to do is put that in writing because you'd be surprised how many kids would rather drink juice than milk. And then we're getting a lot of phone calls from guardians or parents, my child has a milk allergy and it's really because the child'd rather drink juice. And then we got to try and find the documented trail from a medical authority telling us that that child truly has it. But we're able to identify all of that at the cash register. It is on the point-of-sale system that we have. When they punch in their number, it lists everything that we need to avoid for that child. So we would just substitute a juice for that.
It does do that. I didn't realize that our system did.
Yes, yes. As long as it's documented from the front office to us, it gets recorded on our point-of-sale system. So when the child comes through, we've got a listing, they can't have this, they can't have that, and then we do what we can to make sure we don't upset the child, we'll let them know, honey, you should not have that, let's try and substitute this for.
So strawberry allergy or those types of things?
Anything that's out there right now. I mean, wheat, soy, peanuts, I mean, that's a big topic that's out there in the news right now. And I believe Citrus County is kind of ahead of the curve right now, and we continue to work on that. That was one of our biggest goals that we had, was put out there the carbohydrate counts because we do have a lot of diabetics, and also put out all the allergens, which is also on our website. Every item that we carry on our menus has the allergens listed. So the knowledge is out there for the parents to see, and they'll be able to pick and choose what's in our items.
I was talking with someone from another county about the meals, and they're saying, well, if they don't want to have the milk, they can always have a Coke or a Sprite or something. Not here.
That's against federal guidelines, but I don't want to know what.
Water works.
Well, one of the things that they had done a few years back, and again, Citrus County ahead of the curve, we only had to make a couple of changes, they wanted potable water, basically, potable water, however you'd like to say it, in the cafeterias. And every one of our cafeterias now has a water fountain, so it's right there for the child to drink from. A lot of districts didn't have that, and they had to spend lots of money to get those water fountains.
But we were ahead of the curve.
As always.
It does seem as always, because every time you ask a question, you get an answer just like I got about, well, they can buy the Coke.
A-plus district across the board.
Well, I can tell you, I was at Curtis Peterson and my daughter's dance rehearsal day, and getting kind of tired and needed some caffeine, so I thought, oh, that's right, there's a Coke machine right down the hall. Go to it. Nope, no, not even Coke, but no caffeine products or anything. There was, you know, an energy drink or, you know, a replacement, you know, for electrolytes, and there was water, and there was juice. And I went to two other or three other ones thinking, okay, maybe there's another one here, this is a secret one.
We've got point.
No. So, yeah, so I, and I actually was pleased, because I know that's been the goal, is to try and have appropriate drinks that we're providing.
Absolutely.
So, yes, no, I couldn't even get, I couldn't get one myself, so I went off campus.
Any questions else? I think this clarifies it. Now, I guess we just need, Mr. Dixon and myself, would you prefer the revised wording?
I prefer the revised.
I do, too.
Okay, with the however statement in there, and we can clarify that and move forward with it?
It is clear.
Okay. Any other questions I can answer for you? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so we'll schedule that for public hearing. The third item is policy 8.43 competitive sale regulations. Again, this is just a change to reflect the State Board of Education rules to go to Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services and the appropriate citation. Any questions on that one? And then the final one is policy 8.44, school food service funds. This one, the title of the agency's changed in section five to go to Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services and in citations. Same change as previous, and the new statute is added 570.981. No substantive change. Any questions on that one? Final one is, final policy update is policy 8.45, school breakfast program. This one has a change on section five. It strikes the beginning with the 2010-11 school year, since that's already passed from the paragraph. It adds the section 570.981 as the previous policy change, and it changes the agency from State Board of Education rules to Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services and the appropriate citations.
Mr. Pistone, do we have any schools that are 80%?
Yes, right now we still do, and that's Renaissance.
Okay.
But that fluctuates here and there, and it's usually, once we get past that certain date, they lock them in for the entire year, so more than likely you will have that again at Renaissance. Everybody else falls short of about four to five percent. You have your floral cities and your homeless assassins.
That's what I was.
They're not as close as what we can get, and they're hovering around the 75, 76 percent. They're not there yet.
And is it typically those, I forget what they're called, the BU?
UBRs?
UTEKs.
Typically with that, we have all kinds of breakfast items that we offer. The breakfast wraps and egg biscuit, whatever we can get that'll meet the whole grain guidelines, the protein, the calorie level, and meet all the nutrients. So it's not just one item that we give them because it's universal free breakfast. They get the same items no matter where we serve them, okay?
Okay.
That way, we don't, just because they're free, we don't make sure we keep them.
Do you have that same guideline where like, you can't repeat that same breakfast, or is that not the case?
There is no guideline in states that, if you wanted to put the same item because you knew that's what the kids would eat.
Sure.
That would be our call to make, but we like to add a variety in there. We do repeat one or two items during the week because those happen to be the kids' favorites, and we want them to eat, so no use in serving something that they won't eat.
Thank you, sir.
Is it federal or state, or whose guidelines is this?
On the universal free, that's federal.
On the competitive.
On the competitive food, that is federal, okay? The state can be a little bit more enhanced with it, and that's their right to do, but the minimum is the federal that we have there on the competitive food sales.
So we can't sell donuts before school because the federal government?
Correct. You're in competition with the food service program, and what they'll say is because if the child brought money to go ahead and eat the national school breakfast, then they would say, well, why don't you just not take our federal funding, and you could probably sell all the donuts that you want to sell. So that's kind of their way of thinking.
Just bring them in.
Cake sales after school, you know, hey, we could have a carnival if we wanted to, whatever we chose, but it's that timeframe that they talk about, the competition.
Would you have carnivals?
There you go.
Let me ask, do we ever, do we have any kind of pilot programs in connection with agriculture in the state? I know I always get emails from Lisa, and I can't remember the last name right yet, but for programs that the students are doing, that can be a competition?
Yeah, I mean, you have what they can do, their own gardens, okay? And that gets sent out to the principals, and if the principals want to take part in it, they'll send seeds and they can start growing their own foods, teach them about that. The new person that's in charge under Food and Consumer Services there for is Florida Department of Agriculture, has only been with us about a year and a half, Robin Saffley is her name, but very, she's a fireball. We like what she's trying to do to try and increase more of the students making aware where the food comes from, from underground all the way to your plate. What they call it is from farm to fork. So they're doing a lot of that. That's a good way to put it, and the more we can educate our kids on where food comes from and what's healthy and what's not, then they make better choices as they get older.
And that's done through the department?
Of Agriculture. Usually we'll send it to us, we'll forward it sometimes to the principals, or they'll send it right to the principals. I know Ms. Himmel gets some things sometimes because they'll bypass us and go right to the superintendent, and, but she knows she can come to me and I'll make sure I get it where it needs to be. So.
Right.
I'll keep you in tune if there's anything that we find that looks really interesting that we might be able to do.
I'm always interested in that.
See what we can do with that, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that concludes our policy workshop for today, and then we'll schedule these for public hearings.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Budget. Mr. Blocker.
And Mr. Block, would you point these out as you go through significant items you want us to look at?
Good morning, sir.
This is our next rendition of the budget, keeping mine as still a working document, and we continue to review and refine.
We know it can change.
I'm hoping for big changes.
I hope so, too.
So the first thing's a list of our board members, and we still are four strong. And we only have three today, so we will, of course, our calendar, which is very difficult to read on the PowerPoint, but just to make sure, if you looked into your packet, into the second page, when we come to the next board meeting, we will just ask you to advertise the budget in the paper, and that will be done this Saturday of July 27th in our Citrus County Chronicle, where everything will be published and advertised for our budget workshop or public hearing to approve the tentative budget on July 30th. That is the last Tuesday of the month, so that's when we'll do the tentative budget approval.
Let me ask you some curiosity. When that is advertised, do you personally get a lot of email or calls or that sort of thing?
I used to. Years ago, I used to get tons of them, quite frankly. The last couple of years, I really, if I got one, that's been a lot. I haven't gotten the calls like I used to get. I don't know if that's because more people understand the budget, we've gotten out and communicated it better, or they just have been focused on other areas and not the school district's budget. But we used to get a lot of phone calls, and actually what I used to do is people would complain about the millage rate, naturally. I would actually pull up their trim notice right with them on the phone and explain to them the impact, and a lot of times, they didn't understand, even though property values were going down consistently through the county, when they had purchased their home, their value was at such a lower value that it was, their value was actually going up, so their taxes were being increased, and they didn't understand the whole concept. So it was more of an education in that respect, showing people how the property value and the millage rates and the home set exemption and all this stuff, how it really affects them and when they purchase their homes. So I used to get quite a bit, but I haven't gotten many recently. So it's more of an education.
So on July 30th, when we adopt the tentative budget, is there a set time that we do that?
Typically, we do it at 5:30.
5:30. So that meeting probably shouldn't start until about later in the day?
Not knowing what's on that workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, as we get closer to it, see what topics are on there, we'll move it to that afternoon, like 1:00, 2:00, something like that.
Okay. Good. That's good.
Did Chuck leave already?
Chuck leaves.
No, 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 but, and Mr. Block, you could answer this. I just, the five-year work plan, too, that we approved at that time, it's, again, and I'm stating this for public knowledge, we then take that, it's sent to the state after approval, we then send a, if I recall, a hard copy and a digital copy over to the Board of County Commissioners.
Correct, correct. Yeah, and that, once again...
And that's been consistent.
Right.
As we have done that always.
Yeah, that's been in our hierarchical agreement. And then we will approve that tentatively, and September we'll approve the finals, and then we'll have to submit that to the state and everything electronically through their database.
So the public needs to always have input, this is approved.
Oh, absolutely.
Always have input.
And they'll have opportunities at the tentative budget, to the public hearing, and then, once again, the final budget hearing, that is September 10th, I believe it is.
Okay, so September 10th, final hearing, so input goes right until the final.
Right.
Did it even open the work page?
No. The DOE capital work plan has not even been opened for submission, even to be entered, actually.
July something.
Yeah, it'll be the last part of July for the email. But we're pretty well ahead of the capital plan. We've been, we've had that pretty well settled for quite a while, I believe, without some minor changes or whatever.
And things always come on and off.
Absolutely, yeah. And we put this in here just to make sure everyone understands the statute in reference to what declared a financial emergency, and there's several, several criteria that you can be placed into a financial emergency. The one that I'm always concerned with is E2E, is the fund balance deficit. And, you know, as you'll see, our fund balance continues to deteriorate based on, you know, the use of that fund balance to actually balance the budget in the last three to four years. So that's one that always concerns me, and as you see, the slide we have is the fund balance, and the slide down from what we've been the last four years. And then, of course, our own policy and our budget system and how we do the policy and how that we bring to the superintendent, to the board.
So I want to put the fund balances. When you look at the fund balance, when that's gone, that's gone. Some people think, well, that's a fund balance in this particular account, but there are eight or nine other accounts, you can just go get money from those and put, no.
No, because each fund is restricted, right? Each fund is restricted for their own use, their own definitions of those uses, and you can't intermingle the funds. That's basics of government fund accounting.
So when the money decreases, unless there's something that happens that brings more money in, you just can't go and get it from another fund and put it in because you're low? It's, you know, like, we might have a checking, a savings account, you can go back and forth, but we don't have that ability to do so. If it's gone, it's gone.
Right. And you have your federal fund, you know, special revenue fund, which is your federal funds, and those are earmarked for those certain projects, your capital funds, which are earmarked for your capital projects, your internal service fund, which is your health insurance fund. So we have certain funds that you just can't intermingle the, you know, the dollars to essentially take care of deficits.
And I think just for cash flow, there are times where we've been able to take from our capital on a very limited, short-term basis, but that must be paid back in a very, you know, it's basically that we're just borrowing against our cash on hand, but then it's got to be paid back, otherwise there's significant...
Yeah, and we do that every year in our lean months, and I've actually started exploring the potential of maybe doing a TAN, a tax anticipation, no, just our line of credit, something that we're protected if, you know, do continue to do if they're doing, that way we have ample cash on hand, or at least the availability of cash.
Well, that may go into your second part, and that has to do with our policy, and my question's just going to be is, since you bring it up, when it comes to us having a credit rating to be able to do some of those things, is not our reserve a part of what is looked at?
Very much so. Matter of fact, about four months ago or whatever, I had a conversation with Fitch, our rating agency, who continued our A rating with them based on, you know, our review with them and conversation. Just got noticed that S&amp;P is, once again, asking us to go over the operations and the issues at hand with property value. Duke, I have a questionnaire that I need to submit back to S&amp;P by July 8th. After they review that questionnaire, they will then have a follow-up conversation with myself, our financial advisor, to review and have further conversation so they can reissue our credit rating. Our credit rating at the time, at the current time is an A, the same rating we have when we went for the bond issue. We don't want that to go down because it does start singling some issues with your financial stability, financial health. So we will review those questions, start answering them, but a lot of that has to do with how you manage your budget and how you've used your fund balance, and has there been any growth in your fund balance or, you know, a decline, and we've certainly seen decline in our fund balance, in which the rating agencies will be looking at how you've handled this, you know, downturn in economy, the downturn in the property values, and have you made the adjustments appropriate enough to compensate for that reduction in revenue. And I can tell you that, you know, four years ago, we were at the top of the heap as far as school districts with our fund balance, our financial health. We were very, very healthy. We have been on the downturn, going down with the fund balance, where other districts actually are now in the reverse of us, they're going up. They've made a lot of changes and they've gone up in their fund balance, and we're, so we're at the difference in the spectrum we were four years ago.
If we factored the Duke energy issue out, then we would not have that same problem.
Well, we still would have the same problem, absolutely. That's just another factor that we're having to deal with. Because remember, the majority of that money has been reimbursed to us by the state. We lost about $750,000 on the supplemental discretionary. But be that as it may, we have bigger issues with the downward turn in our fund balance, not making the necessary, you know, reductions into the budget to take care of the use of those dollars.
So did you get $750,000?
Well, it was originally about eight. Remember, about 1.5 was out of capital, and about six or so, I think, was, you know, without the operating. But the state came in and reimbursed us about 5.3 million on the required local effort piece.
But left over was not reimbursed, about $700,000?
For the general fund, about 1.5 of the capital fund. Because they ruled not reimburse us for any of those.
But going...
But going forward, while we still... Ms. Powers is correct, we still haven't recaptured that, and there's really going to be no opportunity unless there was something in a lawsuit.
That's correct.
That would do that. Going forward, though, are we potentially in that same situation if, for example, the... This, you know, we have an indication of what the property appraiser is giving us a general idea of what he's going to assess their property at? If they then make a good-faith payment, and let's say they do it $19 million again, are we in that same situation?
Absolutely.
And so, we potentially could lose, say, almost another million dollars.
Correct, another general fund, right.
So, that continues, because each year becomes a new lawsuit.
Right.
So, that lets, as you're talking about, a decline that continues to exist.
And I think, Ms. Powers, that's where I think Ms. Powers is also saying that we're... That's still not entirely... That's still an issue we're dealing with on top of that.
Absolutely.
The majority of our fund, of our reserve, does it typically, a lot of that come from the general fund that we show as, like, undesignedated reserve or...
Right, that's the specific fund I'm talking about, is the general fund.
Is the general, it's not... So, the capital, which we actually get hit the worst dollar-wise when it comes to a Duke situation, the general actually does have to... I mean, that does affect our reserves that would be handling.
Correct, yeah. So, we will meet with S and P, go over the issues at hand, try to reassure them that we're financially stable, financially healthy. The big issue is, you know, make sure you're going to make your bond payments, which we will make our bond payments, that won't be an issue, to maintain our credit rating, because as you all know, even personally, you want to make sure you maintain your credit rating. So, the next slide just talks about our policy as far as maintaining our unrestricted fund balance at about 3.5% of the recurring revenue. So, just want to make sure we always hit that target. And you can see the taxable value. Once again, the slide shows where we're coming in this year. Now, the number 9.5 billion is what the DOE and their FEFP run sent down. If you remember the letter that the property appraiser sent out, it was a little bit higher than that. So, that will be recalculated once he does his certified taxable value on July 1. That will be certified to the state, the state will then readjust the FEFP based on new values. So, that's probably going to change.
Just, you know, again, going by the number, and I apologize to have the numbers totally off the head, but I want to say, the Duke property was appraised at roughly $30 million and change. They ended up paying 19. If this year, the property appraiser does assess them at, say, 50, and they still do the amount, does the difference, because it's higher, affect us a little bit more positively in what we can recoup from the state when the state has to come back and do a calculation?
Hey, I've asked them to actually run a scenario first.
Okay, that's...
And I've been with them again last week, asked them again to please do this. I haven't seen it yet, because I do want to see what the impact's going to be. Ultimately, it may be a little bit more. I mean, it may be a little bit more, because your .748, based on a higher taxable value, is going to be more revenue. So, you'd have to make that adjustment. So, I've asked them to run that scenario a couple of times now to see how it would look.
So, it doesn't get better necessarily?
No. And then, you can just see our tax budget over the last few years. We're at for discretionary required local capital, and you can see we're... We had the .25 critical capital hourly for four years, and we no longer have that this year, so... Which is a topic I think we want to talk about, too, is, you know, is the board's intention or thought to go back out on the 14 ballot for the .25 again? And I don't know if you all had much discussion about that. Is it something that we want to start looking into and have Wes prepare?
We can't discuss it.
Right, was it if you all wanted to discuss it?
And as well as, I guess, one of the questions becomes, too, is, is it something that we do as a millage rate? Is what... Have we had any change in legislation this last term as far as sales tax?
As far as the sales tax, it's still capital.
It's still capital.
Yeah, I haven't been notified of any changes with that statute. You'd have to do the .25 again.
And the commissioners are thinking of doing something, is that correct?
They're looking at doing MSBUs and more specific taxing units for certain things.
Certain areas.
Yeah, they're raising millages and raising taxes.
Yeah, I think it loo... I think there was initially a conversation, though, of sales tax, and I think that's what we were thinking, but I think they've narrowed it down to MSBUs and STUs.
Right. And you can see our tax collection ratio, of how much we've collected over the years on both the general fund and the capital fund. And then, where we're at to the original budget, you can see we're short on the original budget. You can see over the years, we actually collect over 100%, because we budget 96%. So, we're very good at, you know, the taxpayers of this county are very good about paying their taxes. So, this year, we're about 87% on the original budget, but we're about 94% of the amended budget as far as our Duke reduced their payment. So, we still have, you know, a couple more payments to come in, and hopefully, we can be up a little bit higher.
And again, Mr. Blocker, for clarification, we budget at 96.
That's correct, yeah. You know, a lot of districts, you know, they struggle to get 90%, 93%. So, we're actually very healthy in our tax collection. We're very good in that respect. And the FEFP run, as we've seen before, and we'll get another one in the middle of July, will be the second calculation after the property appraiser sends up his certified taxable value. They'll recalculate the whole state. And just so you know, when Duke did what they did this year, when they don't pay their tax payment, and the state has to then send us down or require local effort, there's no real magic to how they do that. They get one pot of money for the year, and that's how they distribute it through the FEFP. When that happens, they send us our extra money, everybody else in the state gets shorted. They make adjustments on everybody else, and they just give us back more money.
That's what I was wondering, was I'll speak to you.
I mean, that's essentially what they do, is there's no magic.
Thank you.
They don't go back to the state and ask for more money to compensate us, they just take less from everybody, they just give everyone else less to give us more.
You said that, that I'm going to take away from the rest of them, just like you're saying. Not pleased with this stuff.
They don't use a reserve of their own.
No, no.
To be able to make that up.
No. And then, remember, the FEFP enhancements allocation, 2.4 million. There's been a lot of discussion on how that is to be allocated out. The last guidance we've gotten is essentially, you can either meet the 2,500 or the 3,500 that the language refers to, or the proviso language gives you the opportunity to totally negotiate that, and there's no mandates on how you are to spend it as far as the 2,500 and 3,500. It can be totally negotiated, as long as the negotiations are settled, ratified, and the board approves it, and then you can settle it that way.
We've got it. I don't know if you got it, too. Kathy and I can send it to you. The Florida School Board Association yesterday sent us out a...
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
So, which in there it tells you that.
Yeah.
And it's totally, can be totally negotiated, so you're not mandated, not handcuffed to that.
There was some flexibility.
There's a lot of more flexibility now.
One of the questions, though, with that, that it didn't... It still was unclear to me, and it may be a conversation for another time, but I do just want to point it out, was because we're having issues with school grades, was that it said, again, in bargaining, whether it has to be tied to student gains.
It doesn't have to be tied to performance whatsoever.
Your performance.
As long as you bargain it, and it's ratified, the board approves it, that's all that needs to happen.
Which I have no problem with.
As much as you...
By the way, but that seems to conflict with statute.
Well, because they're telling you to go by the proviso language, and the proviso language gives you the out as far as it being negotiated. It gives you an and/or.
Works for me.
Yes.
Because we're going to have a lot of fun with that data coming reason, so as long as we don't have to do that, I'm feeling a whole lot better about it.
Right.
This is going to be the first one, something Kathy and Steve are going to say.
Well, it just seems odd that they're telling us all steps, all other things have to be tied to student gains, and then they're sending this one down, which, again, I'm more than happy to accept, but that's just...
The question that was asked, I was at the conference last week, no less than about 10 times, I think Joy Frank asked at 5:00, to make sure she got clarification, and at that one point, it... Does it have to be tied to performance and/or the 2,500 or 3,500? The response from DOE was, no, if it's collectively bargained and approved by the board, that's all that needs to happen.
Boy, that seems to set up, too, that if that's the case, then why can't we do that the rest of the time?
Exactly, that would be the first question she'd ask.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, but...
And I... And I know it's not really us that's having that issue, but...
Just like we've always done in the past.
Yeah, great.
So, once again, the same thought about the base student allocation, how it's going up. Graphically, you can see we're still none at the levels we were at the '07, '08 year, but at least we're starting to climb up. And economically, the state is coming back. I mean, right now, the state is estimating a starting number next year, where the fund balance essentially about $2.5 billion that they're going to start with. So, the state is becoming very healthy, the markets are starting to turn around. Last week, we heard some discussions from an economist, that you can see that, you know, the housing inventory is starting to be reduced, so people are starting to buy, people are starting to move in, so, you know, although we've been lagging behind, I think we're starting to see some impact, that we're going to start seeing some better economic times for the state of Florida, which in turn will help us. The base funding, up about 2.78% from last year, but as you see graphically, we're still down, but over the last, for the last, we're up over the last three years, so that's good. You know, the one issue that we're struggling with is our FTE, and you can see that we continue to go down our FTE. I mean, at one point in time, unweighted, we were almost at 16,000. Now, we're under 15,000 and almost at around the, around 14,600 mark. So, we are steadily in a declining enrollment situation that is also affecting our funding, and we're having to readjust, you know, staffing at the schools to reflect that.
Mr. Blocker, again, just for the public and so that it's understood, when we get a... When we have that reduced number of that unweighted, that means for every student we don't have, we don't receive funding for. So, we have to then reduce our staffing, along with everything else, to compensate for that. So, we do, you know, that's two issues.
Right.
Not having to do with, we have underfunded mandates, and then, when we have declining enrollment, then we also have to make the initial adjustments.
The other thing that does reflect, as I told you all last time, it does reflect the virtual education FTE, that they backed out about 108 off of our number, that they're prorating us down on the FTE, and it's all based on a formula now of a maximum of one, based on a common student identifier. So, if they take one class here, or they take three classes here, and they take several with the virtual school, we will no longer be able to claim the full FTE, and the virtual school no longer be able to claim the full FTE. We'll have to prorate it down to one, so we may only get, you know, 50%, and the virtual school will get 50%. So, they've actually made that adjustment for us already in our FEFP count, so...
And again, just because I think it's important to understand, while they've done that, they've also kept in statute or even increased the power that we must continue to provide those options to students, so we can't limit, as a district, and say, well, you can take only so many Florida Virtual courses. They can take still as many as they want.
Sure. And the same with dual enrollment. I mean, as you know...
Correct.
Statutorily now, we have to pay for the tuition for our kids to go to the community colleges for dual enrollment classes. Now, the state has come out and said that they can only charge you a standard tuition rate of $72.13 a credit hour, I think it is. So, we now have to pay that. We're estimating that it costs us about $60,000 next school year for the kids to go to dual enrollment. Now, you add... And once again, we can't... Theoretically, you can't tell the kid you can't take dual enrollment. If they wish to take it, then that opportunity must be given to them.
And I want to make this clear, it's not that I would want to ever limit a student. The trouble is, the state is sending that bill to us. And for that, there are many other states, I'm going to use Massachusetts as an example, that you want to take those extra courses, you're welcome to, but that cost is one that the student would take on when it goes over and above what's required. So, in this case, we may, I mean, in our district, we offer eight courses, for example, in high school, or credits that they can take a year. But with Florida Virtual, it allows them that they could, you know, take another one, two, three, four courses on top of that. So, a student who we are really receiving funds for eight credits or seven credits could take 12 credits for the same money. We get the same money for that, or we get a portion of it.
Actually, we get less.
We get less, and we can't limit that.
And also, just to feed into the early graduation that's always been talked about, that that same student now graduates in three years, and so, one year is no longer funded, the school system is out.
Right.
So, again, you kind of account for the loss of funds that occurred.
That's a great, great point.
So, here's the sheet that we all, I can look at. This is what I call the good, bad, and the ugly. You can see right now, tentatively, the forecast for the next year is about $115 million of revenue. Expenses exceed that by approximately $2 million. With the use of that, of the fund balance, so you'd be reducing your ending fund balance next year to about $7.8 million. We do have reserves put down for the nonspendables and restricted in the assigned. That's... Brings it down to close to $4 million, so you... Your ending fund balance would be about 3.8, close to $4 million, or about 3.61%. Under this scenario, we do meet the fund balance policy as set forth by the board, 3.5%. I can just tell you, though, if you look over the years, you see in 2011, we used about a million and a half. Last year, we used about four, oh, just say, just call it five million, so you're at six and a half million. This year, we're estimating to be around another 1.75, just call it 2 million. So, you're at five, probably about $9 million we've used over the last three years. Now, we're going to... And at this scenario, we'd be using even more. So, we've got to start reversing that trend, because we cannot do this. I think I've told you this the last few years specifically. I know last year, I said, we've got to make changes enough to start taking care of that deficit position, because we cannot continue to operate in a deficit position. But as we sit today, that's where we're at. Thoughts, comments?
I was just, I was reading David yesterday, I guess, and I think he was talking about Sarasota, they have closed 30 schools. I had to read it again, I can't, I guess, preschool, 30 schools because of the funding consideration.
It's kind of a question for you.
Thank you.
There are several school districts that are going through and closing many schools, reducing staffing. We're certainly not unique in this point. I mean, most school districts are having to make, you know, drastic changes to compensate for the, for their budget, and they are closing schools, they are reducing staff, they're doing, I think it was Manatee. Now, of course, Manatee was in a very bad situation, but they've come out and got a plan to reduce millions and millions of dollars. I know Pope County was in a situation, had to reduce millions. So, a lot of school districts are doing this. We're not unique, it's just we've got to start, we've started to start reversing that number. Parentheses are bad.
And we're going to start now, way before it started, but to continue, instead of wake up one morning and realize the superintendent has to close 30 schools in the county.
Right, can't pay you.
Right, can't pay you.
Mr. Blocker, in our forecast for 2014, restricted, if you can just walk us through, restricted and assigned.
The nonspendables are like your inventories. You're restricted are your, pretty much, your categoricals, your certain grant items that have to roll over and be spent that way. And then, the assigned is what we put aside for any type of, for, to meet that FEFP enhancement allocation.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, I know we said 3.5, but you know, I'm not comfortable with that at all.
No, I'd never like that fund balance to go below five million, the undesigned, that's always been my, my goal.
I'm there, I'm with you.
But I'd like it to be about six million right now.
When we get to the staffing plans, also, we can talk all day about cutting out post-it notes and cases of paper, but you know, when we need to see bigger numbers, we've gotta start talking about staffing and, and maybe changing the way we staff. You know, we get staff positions right now, secretarial positions, a few of our elementaries still have not lost one, a couple of our high schools haven't. We're still gonna be moving, and we're probably gonna take people from the district and move them out in the schools. So, those positions, we're gonna pull from postings and send them out to the schools or, you know, transfer people. So, those are things that we're gonna continue to work on, which we've been doing. But you know, we've gotta start looking at our staffing plans, and I'll bring up, the last topic was our media specialist, and that would've been a savings of about $400,000. So, as we move through this year, our intent will be to, again, bring that back to you and maybe change those to aides, because in our elementary world, your Title I dollars fund their technology person. So, if we change that position to a technology slash media person, then they could share those responsibilities. Pleasant Grove did it last year, and it may not be the best of both worlds, but when Mr. Blocker talks about other school districts, they've eliminated media specialists, they've taken their PE teachers down to one per school, their graduate arts programs, some of them have, you know, I think it's Marion County, their media specialist shared two schools. So, we've even talked to the principals about that, and there's, everything's got good and bad to it. I believe that we're successful because of things we've done in the past, but we're being forced now to make some of these decisions. So, as we look at our staffing plans, we will continue to bring those back to you, to look at them for discussion, like, in workshops, so that we can move forward and, and change, you know, that bottom number.
And our staffing plans have been based in the past, when we say we've been successful, and we have. They have been based, though, on F, not FCAP, but Next Generation Sunshine State Standards and Sunshine State Standards. Our staffing plan now has to complement Common Core standards. And that means that some of that shifting, as you talked about, media specialist, technology specialist, those are examples of where some of that, then, I think, come to change. That was something I don't think that I fully understood too at the time, is that we may have a technology person at an elementary school that's funded through Title I, and then we also have a media specialist at that school. Not all schools are doing it that way, so there may be a position and a half at one school for those combined duties, or even two positions at a school. And in some schools, like Pleasant Grove, I think did it with one person. So, there's, there are staff members there.
Yeah, in, in the elementary world, the technology specialists, where we used to have the instructional technology, was, is not on the staffing plan. That's why they've always had that person paid for in a Title I. And then, they have the media specialist. At the secondary, they have the instructional technology person, then we've brought it in as a support person, but it's on the staffing plan. So, that's kind of been the two differences. Elementary was never funded for the, the tech person, it's always...
But they've still had one.
Through Title I.
They've, they've done it. Or is it correct that if they had a unit, let's say, science, they might have had a half a science unit, and then a half unit might, I'm using as an example, might get paid through Title I?
They could, they had a lot of flexibility with those dollars. Different schools did it differently, but the majority of them typically used it for a tech person. Thinking, I thought I had, looking into a primary, might've been one that was different, that used like a science unit and maybe half tech or something like that.
We've also looked at some of our TOSSAs, because we talked at the last board meeting about the media specialists for this current school year would be TOSA slash media. So, when we rehire that, or when they have an open position, and they hire that position, we're hiring at 196 and not with the five extra days. And if they need them for different days, we've asked principals to flex their days. So, those are things that we're gonna look at, we'll keep you posted on those things, but with our staffing plans, we'll continue to bring those back for workshops.
You know, one, two, that I, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna say, I like the idea very much of looking at the sharing of teachers and instructional people between the schools, because that can work very well. I saw years ago at Citrus High School, and then it was middle school, shared a person in van, worked lovely, you know, beautifully. So, I think when you bring it to us, you could bring it to us in that light and say, well, these two schools could share this particular person, and then we'll know.
So, some looping to some of those students, then it happens, but then I can see.
Exactly.
You're prepping them in middle school, and then you can use them. You know, one area, and, and again, when we have these conversations, it is never to devalue our staff who do so much to have made our schools so successful. But one of the areas that I, I have also looked at and wondered is, our elementary schools have a principal and one AP. Our high schools have more APs, but there are a tremendous amount more of after-school activities which mandate and facilitate having to have an administrator on that campus for a variety of those activities. My question is middle school. One of the middle school, and the middle schools, it seems like typically operate where one of the APs is a curriculum AP, and one of those APs tends to do discipline facilities. It doesn't always, but largely can. Is there a significant savings to, say, take that discipline facilities AP and make that a TOSA position, more of a Dean position? And I say Dean, I'm, I'm careful to try and use the word Dean, because I think Dean involves administrative where I think TOSA does not, even though we, I think, call Deans one thing, but they're classified as TOSSAs.
We can look at that. I do know that we've taken assistant principals and hired assistant principals, and some of them make less than some of our TOSSAs, because TOSSAs help scale those types of things. So, we'll look at the money.
Understand.
We'll look at the money.
And I didn't think about that.
One other thing to consider, too, is that we're really making a push that we don't have administrators to run those functions, that they're all structural leaders.
Right.
Because with the new evaluation system, they need to be in classrooms. It takes that many administrators to give me a number of evaluations that, with the new system, to give it, it's, it's just gone. So, that's something TOSSAs, humans, they...
That they can't do then. Is, is there a classification, and, and again, it may not matter, but where they can do appraisals, but we have, is there a step like below APs that we could...
So, that department heads and...
Yeah, or something where they can do an appraisal, but we can, we could, in theory, create a position that saves us some money.
Not if they're money necessary.
Okay.
They can't, they can't sign on money.
They can't, that's, and that was the question.
Here, teachers do them, but they're not towards their evaluation, but they're more for the typical.
Right.
But they're more...
They're pure, pure things. Okay.
However, I've made note, I will, boy, that's a question.
Because the sad thing is, people, we, like you said, we can save all the post-its notes, we can do all of those things, and I could do all that within the district, and we're still probably not gonna save a single position with a lot of those reductions. It's people, unfortunately, that are our biggest expense, and that's the worst situation to be in, but it is the reality. And, and because we're talking about the fund balance and those reserve, unfortunately, that's the only way we're gonna get there.
Next slide's a little smaller, kind of a little bit under paper presentation. But it just kinda goes through all the funds to date, and by function, you can see where they're at. And then, essentially, we're looking at about a $217 million budget in total right now. Your general fund around 121, including the fund balance, debt service about $6 million, capital, including the fund balance about $55 million, food service about 10, some of your other federal programs, about eight and a half, and then your internal service fund, 16 to 17 million. And those will change even up to the final budget and throughout the year, because lots of times we get federal grants and things that come in that were not notified until after we approved the budget. And then, you can look at it by object on the next page as well, and it kinda just breaks down everything by object. And then, of course, we'll break down by object. On the general fund, you can see where our dollars are spent. About $77 million in salaries, over 19 in benefits, purchase services about nine and a half million, energy about five million, material supplies about four, and then etc., you can see, and other expenses about two. Altogether, we're down right now against our original budget last year, around 4.5%. And then, the pie chart kinda breaks it down, you can see, and you, and what you said before, Mr. Kennedy, as far as personnel, personnel essentially, you know, make up over 80% of our budget, so that's, that is the big expense that we have. And that should be your biggest expense, and this is not out of line.
Right.
It is what it is, so...
Yeah, and I think, I know, as board members, we know this, 'cause that's part of what we also do when we go in to the Florida School Board Associations and our other trainings, that it shows us that this isn't unique to Citrus County's formula. This is, that's just how districts are made up. And that's why it's, it's always so tough to make these decisions when we have...
You're exactly right. And then, we kinda broke it down even more, we took each object and broke it down, so you can kinda see what those objects are paying for. And in the salary object, you can see administrations about six and a half million, your classroom teachers are about $46 million, other certified instructional positions about five million, aides over four, other support plus to 15, and then board members about 160,000. So, altogether, you can see we're down about 2.4%, close to 2.5% down from last year. And then, graphically, you can kinda see how it all plays out on the pie graph, to see where... So, we took each object and kinda broke it down, so you could see exactly what those objects are made of and how we're, how we're spending those dollars. And then, yes...
So, just, as we're looking here, the largest there is 59%, and that is what group?
Classroom teachers.
And the 0%, the lowest one there?
Board members.
Board members, okay.
Not that you're zero, but...
Pretty close, pretty close.
Other certified instructional, this is another 6%, so that brings you, you know, out and out to 65%. Those are in, in the, in the, in the classrooms typically, and you got your aides. So, altogether, you know, the majority of our dollars are spent in the classroom, in the schoolhouses.
Yeah, because administration, and I, you know, talk about this, uh...
And, and, and most of that is at your school-based administration.
I was just gonna say, that is school-based, and as Hamill just mentioned, it probably is gonna be even more. And I know our district has already been smaller, and we've talked about that in the past. Sounds like we're gonna get even smaller here. And I value that what you're doing, I just, I don't think people can fully appreciate how lean this district, and I'm talking about now this district office is running.
And I know you all brought up at the last board meeting about the second, director of secondary. I've not posted it yet, we're trying to get to the budget. We, we too, value that position, but right now, we're just trying to get to the budget until we see what our funding numbers are. So, it's not that I've forgotten to request, I just put on hold.
So, Mr. Clodder and Mr. Mullin will be doing, will be getting one. Can we at least get them roller skates?
He told me Blackress was out there saying that.
Go to the clinic.
Well, if you notice, he's got a cotton ball in his ear, his blood was coming out, it's prepped for his heart, so he's stuck to it and to soak up the blood.
Yeah, he's also the same way, but he does.
And, and, and also for, so that it's clear, too, we have not, and I don't think we have any intention of posting the financial director.
Yes.
So...
And I will...
Do you have arguments with yourself? Do you, you know, close the room and sit on one side of the desk, and then run to the other side?
No, he's free to...
No, I just send emails to her on Sunday.
That's...
And you all may or may not know this, but Ms. Gaddis retires in August, and we are not planning on replacing that position. So, when you call up her, you're getting in. No, but...
Actually, that's not necessarily, that has been the case. I know Mr. Mullin answers his phone quite a bit, and...
But we'll have a plan in place, and they're working through that.
Well, you are not replaceable anyway.
Can you hear that, Mike?
That's what I tell her every day.
Okay. So, then, we'll go through, you can see on your fringe benefits, the first one is your, your FRS, your retirement, almost $6 million we pay out. Social Security, pretty close to the same number, close to $6 million. Your health insurance board match, about six and a half million. And we are expecting that to go up based on some of the information we provided to you before. With the Affordable Healthcare Act, we do anticipate more people coming onto the plan, that's why you see that going up. Workers' comp, about 1.2 million. Unemployment comp, we've seen a steady decline in that number over the last couple of years, so we're hoping that continues.
Workman's comp, though, it looks like it's gone down as well.
We've been very, very diligent in trying to get that...
And I'm sorry, I just had to knock on wood when I said that, so...
And then, you can kinda see it, you can see it graphically, you can see the, the three big ones, health insurance, your FICA, social security, FRS, retirement, all around that 30% mark, they make up the lion's share of your fringe benefits. And then, we look at object 3100, or 3,000, your purchase services, they have a range of things from your professional services, be your attorneys, your engineers, all your consultants, your insurance and bond premiums, travel, repairs and maintenance, rental agreements, communications. The big one you'll see down there, and I'm, I'm delving into this one and getting more information, is your garbage recycling and water, we're seeing a real uptick. And a lot of that has to do with some anticipated increases in our sewer and water rates throughout the whole county. There's different providers, and they're all anticipating and going to the Public Service Commission, looking for some substantial increases, around 7% to 10% on each of them. So, we don't know that to be true, or to be, that has not been approved yet, so I'm gonna go back and start looking at those with Mr. Billings, we started yesterday, and see if we can maybe start reducing some of those anticipated increases, because they may only be mid-year, they may not be approved. So, we're, we're kinda forecasting the worst-case scenario here, where we might be able to ratchet some of that back down, looking at those.
What, in, the insurance and, and bond premium, that was what we talked about, was part of the increase?
Increase. You can see it's about a 43% increase.
Repair and maintenance, I see you, you show it, our actuals, it looked like we're substantially down last year.
Right, we, we, we've been ratcheting that bit down, and I remember, a lot of the, a lot of projects that Mr. Colasanti does has been, began, you know, the end of last month and this month, so that number will go up by the end of the year. But we're still trying to ratchet them back down based on just trying to do less of what he has out there, knowing that we've made some changes, you know, with our, our schedules out there.
And I know he's trying to balance putting things off and at the same time, not creating new expense for us later, or a larger expense for us later. And we do recognize that, it's just been tough.
We've been trying to do, I mean, it's like we speak about our time, trying to do everything we can to keep it out the classroom, so... And you can kinda see it graphically, how it all, all folds out. Then, on your utilities, you can see, I, I tell you, we have been doing very, very well in utilities as far as without the water and sewer, but our, our natural gas, electricity, electricity, we have been doing yeoman's work in trying to keep that cost down, because electricity continues to go up, and we've been reducing our, our loads and our needs. You know, Michael Billings is out there every day trying to do what he can to try to reduce, maybe it's a load on an air conditioner coming on too soon, he wants to run it for a longer span, so when it is a cycle timing, he, he is really out there all the time looking at this stuff to try to help reduce our electrical costs, and he's done yeoman's work on that.
Mr. Blocker, I'm sure you would understand if we didn't pay our bill.
Well, unfortunately, I don't wanna take that chance.
But every dollar we save is a way that we're able to do that without...
And then, the last item is diesel. You can see that we've been, it's holding pretty steady. We may be able to do some changes to that diesel budget, but that's one of those ones you never know when this is gonna spike, when this can come back. We try to look at, you know, industry forecast for the year and see where they're at as far as diesel fuel, but that's one of those ones that, you know, we can, we can reduce that budget, but we may have to come back to and say, I need the increases, because now the price has spiked in December, because, you know, fuel oil up north, now they're having to, you know, deliver a lot of that for heating and whatever, when that goes up, diesel goes up, so there's all kinds of variable factors that we have to look at.
How much do you use a day? So, about 3,000 gallons?
Yeah.
3,000 gallons. Now, that you have also reduced as a result of some of the routing...
That's right.
...that's been done, and I know that... That's been done, and I know that, is that still, I know she's, both does it by computer, and then I think she also, though, there's some areas where you kind of have to do it by hand if you want to...
It'll do dry runs and see how they affect the routes and everything, and they try to mitigate them, and you know, they try to reduce, you know, time. But sometimes, you know, we have to sacrifice some of the time of the bus to reduce some of the routes.
The electricity, because this just shows two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. But if I recall, and Mr. Mullin, I was thinking back when you were director of facilities and... What was the director, I was trying to think, but I guess it's facilities, but it was...
Was that good, director?
Thank you. I remember there was a couple of years where we had a huge reduction in dollars, I mean... And it was, I think we've had over a million dollars in reductions and savings during that period of time, so... It looks like it may be a small amount here, but over the long haul, the last five or more years.
It's been harder to get those savings, but originally, when we took the...
First year was like five or seven hundred thousand.
Out of the plane, we reduced that, those kind of things, and increased the set points on the air conditioner by two degrees. That was where we saw the biggest savings.
And there's some districts that have increased their set points down to like seventy-six and seventy-seven degrees. Arger seventy-two or seventy-four, I can't remember which, but...
Our insurance premiums, our health insurance premiums would go up.
Yeah. One of the things, though, I can probably present to you for the next, for the presentation, is kind of where we were at electricity five years ago, where we're at now, and then what has happened. Actually, what we can show is the actual increase, because even though the dollar amounts may be staying the same, that we're still decreasing, because they would be going up based on the rates.
And the plan still, because I think as board members, we often sometimes get emails, you know, let us come in and save you, by showing that we've had a program with our existing staff, Mike Billings has been pretty much doing that. We do make changes when they're appropriate, you know, bulbs, I believe we've gone to. But we're also trying to do it in a way where we're not just taking a good bulb, or a good window out that has longevity, and spending new money to save money long-term.
What we did do was hire a consultant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come in and tell us to turn the lights off.
Michael Billings really deserves a lot of credit, because he understands, he has taken the time to learn and understand that there are peak times in energy use where we pay more for a kilowatt, and sometimes, certain times of the day, they go low at other times. So they have staggered the air conditioning and lighting, so that they can take advantage of those peak times.
And he really sees it as a calling, because I mean, he, this is, he's a mission, he's a man on a mission.
And I think many of the teachers have bought into that, because I want to go visit schools, and you'll go in, maybe a light won't be on, and they're saying, well, we're saving electricity, you know, because they don't need it. They're not doing anything in that ring, so they've bought into it.
Another thing Michael has been doing is with the garbage, really going out and assessing the size of the containers, how many, days we need service, and really, a lot of good job, you know, a lot of good work on our garbage. He's out there assessing that every day, I mean, he's looking in the dumpsters, how much you got in here? I don't need this to be picked up today, why are we got three-day service, we can reduce it to two days, and reducing the container size. He's out there all the time doing this, he really does a great job, isn't he?
And any place we've had new construction or rehab construction, I know you'll walk into the room and the lights will go on, and when you walk out of the room where you forgot to turn it, the lights will go off in a very short period of time, so... Excellent work.
So you can see the majority, of course, in utilities is your electricity, but we've been doing a lot to save there. And then in your five object, that's where all your consumables, textbooks, etc. are there. Really, we've been trying to mitigate the increases there. The big increase there is in your repair parts for your vehicles, and as you know, we have not been purchasing vehicles for several years, so you don't purchase, you have to repair, and parts continue to go up, so that's why that ones up sizably. And I think I told you before, Ms. Farmer's looking into some information as far as maybe a lease program, trying to assess the vehicles and looking at some other options to maybe save some dollars there with the vehicles.
As a vehicle, and I know we've, and she has, you've all tried to bring that fleet back in. Are we to the point where we have vehicles now that we can surplus out?
That's what we're, right now, we're actually reviewing and analyzing data to let us know the questions of that, the answers to that very question, so that's what we're doing. In biology, you see, the biggest one there is your consumables and then your textbooks. And keep in mind, we do buy textbooks for your dual enrollment students in addition to paying now the tuition. And the colleges typically change those textbooks frequently.
They're very expensive.
They're very expensive, that's correct. And then your six object, your capital outlay. Materials, furniture, computers, you see motor vehicles here, that's for WTI. We're not buying vehicles. It's a renovation for remodeling, so this is one of your smallest objects that you have out there.
Why were library books, it looked like, so high?
I think that's just replacement of library books, right, Mike?
Yes.
And that's allocated through, I believe, is that allocated through the instructional materials?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
So here's the sheet that, you know, I look at, this is kind of paints the picture, the fund balance graph. Where you can see, you know, up in two thousand ten, we were close to that eighteen million, knowing we had to grow that fund balance to help us through some of the lean times. But we've been on a steady decline, much like our FTE forecast, it's going down, so is our fund balance. But we do have to start turning that curve back up to the, to the north, to start increasing our fund balance to get us back into a healthier position, being able to take care of any hiccups we have, you know, in the middle of the road. Whether it be a Duke, or we have a huge FTE, FTE decrease during the year, those things, you know, typically, we've always had those there to protect us and to take care of those issues. We're getting down to the point where we're not gonna have that available, so... This is a tough one, I'll look at, you need to look at on your packet, but this just kind of goes through... The general fund as far as actuals from last year, actuals to date this year, and then your budget this year, and kind of the differences. These are your revenues, and they're up about close to six million, which the majority of that comes from your FEFP. And the next page goes through appropriations by functions. And then correspondingly, the change is the same.
What is the minus one hundred percent? Our food services, because it's federal.
Right, that's, that is in the, in the federal budget. And then I just put together the graph, I mean, the slide about this is some significant changes. The increase in the FEFP, about four point three million. FRS going up one point three, actually, it's probably a little more than that. That's based on just an allocation of the rector class dropped, it goes significantly, and a lot of the other classes went up. But property casualty, about four hundred and seventy thousand, technology, hundred and sixty, dual enrollment sixty. FEFP enhancement allocation, two point four. And what I forgot to put on here was, I needed to put on here the virtual school.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Blocker, that's the one that I still think is a significant...
And we'll add that to the increase, that is, because that did reduce our FTE count by a hundred and eight, I believe it was.
And I know it's gonna be a little bit of a...
And that'll change.
Expression, but perhaps you need to know exactly what that's gonna be.
And the other thing, that'll change every, every count, that'll change. The other thing that will count, will change every count that'll be recalculated, is your FEFP enhancement allocation. If for some reason, we get a reduction in FTE, now, say you've already settled your negotiations, and you've given that raise to meet that mandate, but then your FTE goes down, that allocation will go down as well, that will be recalculated every count.
And typically, it does, does it not? It hard has been, I mean, for us?
Unfortunately, yes, for the last few years, we've been seeing a steady decline, so that will go down as well.
But you still have to maintain...
Once you negotiate the increase, yeah, you can't change it.
So you have to go to some other area then.
And the money can only be used for that, so the other side of it is...
That's right.
You, you don't want to have not enough, I mean, you don't want to have too much excess, because you can't use it anyway.
And, you know, we heard from the auditor last week, Auditor General's office, and he will specifically be looking to make sure you spend that amount of dollars on increases based on, maybe as one of those two criterias, either the statute language that was passed, or the proviso language. So we'll have to kind of carve out those dollars, actually, you're welcome to show how we spend it.
I know teachers started when the session ended. When are we gonna see the money? The, and because there was some changes in, I think even when that money could be theoretically gotten out, at this point, it still has to go through bargaining.
Yes.
I mean, assuming, it's gonna have to go through bargaining, so whenever that process ends, is when that money would then be able to be allocated out, that...
We will not receive the funding until bargaining has been completed, their contract's been ratified and then approved by the board. Then we submit that plan to DOE. DOE is not gonna approve or deny any plans, they just want to make sure you've met all those criteria, those steps. They then will then send you the allocation, we're not gonna get that money until that time.
In theory, if we all went to the bargaining table, and that day we got it done, when then would be the earliest that...
The next session for bargaining does not start until August...
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth. I don't anticipate that being...
So it would be, even if everything went perfect, it would probably be sometime in September, even if everything were perfect?
I would think, well, October, because they gotta have a certain amount of time to go out and...
But you don't think it'd take ten days to ratify it? Yeah, so minimum, ten days to go back out to the teacher.
Okay.
So you could take that and then, and then send it to the...
You're talking Tallahassee.
I don't think this, they've actually sent us a template already, on how to submit the salary enhancements. I don't think that's gonna be a slow process, I think it's gonna be very quick, because this is high priority to everybody. I think the negotiations is gonna be, you know, the point where we have to either fast-track it and then all come to an agreement quickly, get it ratified by the bargaining unit, and then approved by the board, and then sent to DOE. I think the DOE is gonna be a quick turnaround, they've already sent us the template on how to do it. That would be my hope, anyway. And then the next thing, we kind of break it down by schools, you can kind of see some of the changes in the schools. You'll see some up, some down, but, you know, all of that's based on, you know, employees leaving, new employees coming, you know, salaries. I mean, that's always, nothing different than any of the year, what we see there. So your elementary schools are about up a quarter of a percent, really pretty significant.
Mr. Blocker, sometimes is this like where, if you've got a population of teachers that have been more, that have been teaching longer, that will just have an effect?
Right, and this is no different really, this happens all the time. You might have retirees, and you get younger teachers, or vice versa, maybe some teachers, younger ones have left, and you've actually brought in more veteran teachers, so this is not, this is not unique to this year. And you can see that in the middle schools, they're down about a half a percent, and then high schools down close to one percent. And your specialty schools are down as well. Renaissance being the biggest change.
What is the number beside this crate, why is...
That's just an allocation through the FEFP.
Down, down seventy-one percent?
That number for DJK will go up through the year, because there's gonna have to be additional allocations given to them through SAI, instructional material, other stuff will go off to them later on during the year.
So they won't be down seventy percent?
Correct. And then you can see the district cost centers. And these actuals are not completed through the year, so a lot of this will be skewed, and you'll see the county-wide, that's the reserves at one point four million. That's where it starts, they all get allocated out to the schools during the year, that way, you'll see that, that'll be gone, it'll go out to the schools. You'll see some increases in the schools as well, like DJK, etc.
Maintenance actuals.
Right now...
Are quite low compared to what it probably will be.
Correct. So a lot of this will change, this is, you know, you can either forecast the year in actuals, or you can just have the actuals, and then we'll update it as it goes along. And we just, we just do the actuals as of the date. And I think these are as of May thirty-first. And a lot of, a lot of expenses happen in the month of June, believe it or not. So if we look at debt service, this is what pays our bonds. So this is pretty much a straight pass-through from capital over here to pay the bond payments. Nothing really unique in this one. Food service, Mr. Pistone's food service budget. He's been doing yeoman's work as well, as being able to maintain his fund balance to help offset some of the increases he's seeing, specifically with food, food costs for him is going up. So he's been able to help mitigate some of that.
Is he still also, his department helping with some of the costs, I believe? The custodians during that lunch period and... Thank you, Mr. Roy, wherever you are.
Your other federal programs, these are all the grants, Title I. The remaining era of Brace the Top. And these are just specific earmarks that we give for them, and we're spending them really based on the grants. Your internal service fund is your health insurance fund, which has been doing very well. But we do expect some increases based on the Affordable Healthcare Act. And we'll have to make some decisions based on who we offer the insurance to, especially like for the substitutes. So we'll have continued conversation with you on that topic as we get closer. And we're gonna start paying more fees to the federal government for that program as well, as was explained to you in password check on that. So I don't know who it's affordable for. Maybe I missed Billy on here, though. So we just want to go through just some of the staffing for the district office, so you can see. Finance will be less one finance director, so that will be a reduction there. Our superintendent and board cost center remains the same, except for, as Miss Hemel mentioned to you, when Ms. Geddes retires, we'll be, I'll be replacing that, but right now, it's there. IS, they did get additional position last year, that was not, that's for the rule out for Skyward. Student services, some of the changes there have been with nurses, we took a nurse from, that was assigned at Crest, was now in student services, and they've got, I think Ms. Hoag is a nurse, there's been some changes, so there's really not been, we've just taken all these schools and applied umbrella of student services.
Have they reduced, though?
No. Planning and growth is the same.
No, but it's just, looking here, you had six, now it looks like you have ten.
Right, we pulled some from those that were assigned to the schools back under student services.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so they were, we did have them on a staffing plan for schools, or somewhere else.
Planning and growth is the same, co-compliance is the same, no changes there. Dr. Geddes is down one, and that was, I believe, the Edie Spate position.
What position?
Ms. Spate was filling in during the first part of the year as far as helping the Skyward transition. She was under Dr. Geddes's management and that was not replaced. ESE, down a couple of positions. We fluctuate with them. A lot of times we look at some of their, if they're going to use consultants because they can't fill positions, we'll reduce their staffing. So we fluctuate with them, making sure they have the ample staff to provide the services.
Are they based...
Yeah, they do a lot of general fund and IDA. That's why you see the decimals, you know, 0.5 or 0.5 because we'll do a lot of split funding with them.
Are their totals based at all on ESE population?
The funding, the ESE guaranteed allocation is, correct.
But, but as far as their staffing plan, do we base it solely on ESE students?
Do you have district office?
Yes.
That's based on a lot of conversations with Nancy, based on the needs of our kids out in the school.
Good. And the reason I say that is because I know the state has made it where we've had what appears to be a declining ESE population. But what they've done is made it more challenging for us to always identify them or through the required RTI process, we have as many or more students we've identified with needs.
And many times she sends staff from the district to help.
Exactly. And that's, that's why I just would be concerned if we were basing it on that.
For the RTI, if there's a need, she sends someone to go there.
Right.
And we've had behavior challenges, so we've had to send district staff out to stay at the school for a week or two.
Just because they're ESE, they're not ESE, doesn't mean our ESE department is not...
Right. That's why you see a lot of times a split funding.
Right.
Because the IDEA funding is strictly for ESE children. And we'll do split funding that way. We can technically use it for other, good other children. Facilities is the same.
Is that a psychologist too or...
Maintenance, you can see they're down about three positions next year. We continue to refine that staffing. If we're doing less jobs, we need less staff. So once again, John has continued to be the team player and we're looking at his stuff and seeing where he can help reduce the budget.
And these are district staff not...
Correct. That's right. Ed services is up one position because we did fund for the secondary head director, whether we fill it or not, but we did fund it for this year. Research and accountability is the same. HR is the same. Risk management's the same. Preparation development is the same. Transportation is down five positions. Once again, Marilyn looks at her staffing and how she can reduce, combine, create more efficiencies. And this year, we were able to gain five positions there. And then we put in here the element, the school staffing, just to put back in here what we talked about before, knowing that we're potentially going to come back to, as we spoke before, about making more enhancements in this, but this is what it is from the last approval we did.
Now that the scores are in, I'm assuming the high schools in particular are probably making their adjustments of now the courses that they're going to need to require and the staff they're going to need. Because I know that was a little bit in flux because we didn't know how many we'd need to have remediative courses for and...
Does that affect your content areas like math?
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Math in particular is the one.
Your middle schools. So these are the same ones that we approved last time, just to put back in there to keep that in front of you and know that we're going to come back and continue to refine the staffing plan with you.
Ms. Hemel mentioned again about, for example, the bookkeepers or secretaries at some of the schools because not all the schools have equitability. There's some that still have positions. We were, we'd been trying to do with it, deal with it through attrition.
Correct.
Are we still able to do that luxury build attrition in order to reduce that?
We've had a couple. We've moved recently. We've gotten out the position of one of the schools that had already lost a position. So I would think that, I don't want to give the timeframe.
Understood.
Right now, if they're comfortable doing that.
Okay.
Do we have any shared units there?
Are two small schools share, or they share TOSA?
TOSA, and they're actually going to start sharing. Forest City has a bookkeeper, Holmes has a dozen. Holmes has a data secretary, Forest City doesn't. So they're going to start sharing those resources. And it may be just by communication, the telephone, helping out. So they're going to start sharing that way as well.
Is that one of those that, at one school, they either lost somebody or...
Yep.
Then there was the kind of the, we had to reduce a unit and so which one was available?
Whoever left first was kind of...
Right.
But so they're going to share common resources that way to kind of help each other out.
And that was one more recent move. We had a position at Crystal High School we could fill and there was a position at Holmes Sasse that he needed to lose. So we moved that person to Crystal High School. So it seemed like it, it sounds like it never happens, but it seems like it pops up almost every week.
It seems like you all are keeping track of all the schools very closely. Because I remember years ago, you wouldn't know if this school had a media specialist, football coach, whatever. But now it seemed to have...
To watch everybody, really watch everybody, right?
So any questions about the general fund? What we need to do?
I think you're doing an excellent job and I appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that, but I need to continue on reducing that deficit.
I know you do.
That's been a concern that we've got to continue to reduce that to start balancing out and maybe even start running a surplus to start building back our fund balance.
I'm for that, you know?
And I think that the places I go back to are those staffing positions that, that you have been doing, but that I think we have to continue to be... I don't know if the word is aggressive, but if we, you know, if we've established we don't have, you know, we don't have one at one school, elementary school, then, you know, that's where we have a place where we can reduce. And if we can reassign them as again, I mean, I think that there's savings there that we've been adding them up, you've been doing it. But I think we need to also see where, you know, what's the end result of that? Because I think there's a large number there that you all have been doing. And then I think we have to look at, I mean, I have been a huge proponent of the secondary director, but at this point, that's a dollar amount. And I think we have to keep looking, you know, I think we need to take those positions and see where we're at with that. And if that can get rolled into those reserves or those amounts, then I think we need to look at that with your input of whether the, you know, that you can sustain without those positions again for another year.
And we have to remind the rules and regulations, state that it attracted up by somebody. Right now, you all are doing it all, but secondary person would be focused on that.
Okay, capital plan.
So we still give you nothing, is what you're saying?
We'll continue to persevere.
But we're going to start bringing things back. Okay, so we'll continue to do that.
The thing that I do is, we've talked about these positions like this, but we, I don't think, again, just as we've talked about positions or items of reducing in the budget, you're, you're showing some of these, but I don't think we still have ones that are remaining. Like, we looked at, okay, we're cutting these number of secretaries, but how many do we have left? To still reduce that?
Now, the middle schools, they did their mitigation this year. They actually...
And I use secretaries, it's not just them. It's the entire planet.
Like in the middle schools, we were looking at support staff. They elected to lose an aide to keep a data clerk or something because they felt like that was important, a guy as secretary. So that's how they mitigated theirs this year. High schools, Citrus High hasn't met that. We look into Crystal River. And then I think half of our elementarys have met that goal. So we're, we are working toward it through the attrition. And when positions come open, whether that be through retirement resignation or whatever means of exiting the system, we then start looking at other ways to fill that position if we need to, you know?
And that's the problem is if we're dealing with it through attrition, we're saying, you know, that there are programs we're, we're not wanting to let go of. So are those things that you're stating to us in order to, you know, to increase that reserve, that we're going to have to do it by expediting that? Or can we live with, you know, with just dealing with it through attrition? And I guess right now, it's difficult to say, okay, we're going to cut something if you're saying we can deal with it through attrition.
That's how we've been dealing with it, not to say that's how...
But then that, but that's when, well, that was my question though, is can we continue to deal with it through attrition? Instead of just eliminating it?
I can just tell you, we can't continue to live with the fund balance like it is. So I think that's a conversation that if we decide to start reducing positions, that we're going to have to come back to you all, give you a plan and show you how we're going to do that.
And with that, you know, we look, we've talked about the media aide or the media TOSA. We've talked about the technology specialists. And the concern that I have is still that we have, or what has become realistic now is technology is being spent in the elementary world through Title I. Can we continue to do that equitably? Or is the attention that we're going to have a TOSA specialist that is doing all that, that's what we're funding? So that we are saying that that Title I money should be used in a different way? Or that that Title I money is going to supplement that TOSA position? Because in either one of those options, that's a, that's a money savings that even though this year we didn't reduce, my thought was that as principals would post those positions, that in some cases, then they would not need to have their technology person. And that would be a savings to us, such as PGE didn't have. If they had a technology person and they had a media specialist, are we saying in our plan that we're, they're doing both?
That's one of the questions.
We put the staffing plan out there that was approved. We had many conversations with a couple of last month about that very topic, that the instructional media TOSA was on the staffing plan. It's on the staffing plan, it cannot be paid for by Title I.
But the technology person is not on the staffing plan.
Right.
And that's why if we wrote a job description that matched the TOSA media slash technology, eliminated off the staffing plan and gave them an aide for that position, then Title I can pay for those dollars if it's not on the plan. If it's on our staffing plan, they cannot be paid.
That was the confusion that we had.
I mean, that was just the conversation we had.
Because it was confusing. We need to have it very clear.
Because what's, seems to be the case is, is that we, I think the idea was that we were going to be working towards reducing while still also accomplishing what I think principals were telling us the type of person they need. Right now, I don't know that that's what's happening.
We made no progress on that, no.
No, it seems like we didn't. But the, what you're talking about was there. The progress was there, that's what you were thinking, but somehow glossed in the shuffle.
So, I mean, that's to me another area. Whether it's $400,000, that's, I think, I think that's again another area that we've got to look at. I mean, there's potentially almost a half a million dollars in one form or another right there. So I don't know that we can, I don't, I think this year may be behind us. But I think then we need to, as we're posting, structure that.
You know, when we left that meeting, basically this year is behind us. But as we bring that back to you, that would be our intent at that workshop to discuss that and get agreement on that and afford that. So principals do know, next year, you've got one person for that position that'll come out of Title I. And I'm just referring to elementary right this second.
Yeah, and I know that, and I know. Because middle school, because they're also getting Title I dollars down too, there's a conversation there and there's, so there, that's another place where I think that there's still a very real conversation about money.
And sometimes we have to reiterate what we just discussed, a deeper topic, and state the final line, as you see it, or you see it, or all of us see it. So make sure that we have the thought that we wanted to have there.
I think we were on the same page when we left the meeting because like I said, as late in the year as that was, and principals had to go back, they had staff already placed. So that staff in place, they could not ship their Title I dollars for that because that person stayed on the staffing plan.
That was a matter of timing.
Right. So that's why we want to go ahead and get that in place and then we've got plenty of others on board.
And if we need again to develop that, and I think we will have to develop a new job description with all that, that's got to be part of that development so that we can then say, okay, Title I will or will not be doing funding of this and how that's going to fit in.
And Mr. Veeber, I believe, is working on his income for this school. He is working on that job description.
Excellent.
Probably the principals.
Excellent.
Capital plan...
Do we make you feel any better? I don't think so. It's hopeful.
It's not our job.
That's true. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that.
The capital plan essentially has not changed since the previous two meetings when we discussed it, other than the fact that we did put a reserve in for the Duke non-payment of about $2 million this current, this next fiscal year coming up. But if you look across the board, at the end of the five years, our fund balance is down to about $8 million. So we continue to do what we can through the capital plan. We have no real major projects going on other than the roofs, air conditioners and things like that, but no real construction going on. With declining enrollment, we really don't have a need. But everything is in there from the previous meetings that we discussed with you about, including the one-to-one initiative going on that has already started for this year. So I don't know if you wanted to go through this by, in detail, the next slides or if you were comfortable with what we discussed with you before on the capital plan.
Mr. Blocker, I want to give him a heads up.
Yep.
Mr. Block, the maintenance has gone over to Crystal High School. Just to give you a heads up, it won't like be coming to the board to look at their gym floor. They got a price on it, but nobody wants to fix it. So they, Mr. Conosson is in the process of sending out a bid to replace that floor. I think maintenance is painting the gym, the indoor locker room or something, but that area is getting painted. So just to let you know that that bid...
Have we done anything to any of the other floors in the, in the county? Any of the...
Yeah, we've replaced gym floors of many of them.
That's the only one that's left.
That's the only floor we haven't done.
And we didn't do it because of the construction, that we're going to take down the gym and redo it.
No, I didn't mean to criticize it, but I meant so that floor is one that's been remaining. Because I know it's, it's a mess without...
You know, we've got a double-edged sword here. If in the future we see that we're going to finally replace it, if we start putting a lot of resources in it, DOE may say you can't replace it because you're now...
It's not a non-wood floor, it's ten days' use.
Are we getting bids on both a long-term floor and a short-term floor, basically?
I think both floors would last 10 years from what John was telling me. So, but I do believe he's going to get both of them and will bring those back.
Long overdue.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Shocked about that.
No, and I, I'm, I'm with, with Ms. Brian on it. I mean, even though my son's not a gym, won't be using the gym as much.
As often as you.
But others do. And all I mean by that is that that floor needs to, it, we have to do something because I know when, one of the things I was at recently, there was like a huge crack in the middle of it. And I was thinking, is somebody going to fall? I mean, I don't mean falling, like they're going to go, but I mean, they could seriously trip on there. And that was a concern that, you know, looking at it.
They're sending bids out.
Yeah. They, they got a price for repair, relatively cheap to repair, but they really don't want to repair it. They say it won't, it won't, it won't be done right. So I think purchasing is actually putting together bid documents now to send out to get a price on those, on the new floors, whether it be the same kind of floor they have now or wood floor.
And should we have that budget line at our next meeting?
The bid panel?
How long till it's ready?
We've got to put it out, we have to put it out for at least a couple of weeks and then, you know, it'll bring it to July.
Is there a matching bid that could be used from another district?
No, we won't.
So it's either probably, you know, July workshop would be the close of, that's even expediting it, so...
Is, is there any way we could get that done before the first of the school year? Or maybe even just delay the gym for a couple of weeks?
I doubt it would be up before the first of the school year. Because if your bid only gets approved by the board at the July workshop, which July 30th, the school starts August 1st, August 8th. I don't think they could do it. But now I talked to Ms. Connors. She's willing to work to achieve this goal and shut the gym down at some period of time during the fall or whatever that we can... and shut the gym down at some period of time during the fall or whatever, that we could maybe use.
If we could get it done though, in a, if, if the bids came in by the July workshop and we were able to approve it, how quickly typically, I know you can't, you don't have a crystal ball, but typically from the time that we approve a bid, can work begin?
Amy, when you bid that, will they give you an idea?
Yeah, the day, the timeframe for the work being done is in the bid.
It is, okay.
The day that, if you approve the bid on Tuesday, we can issue a P O.
Okay.
I could go and issue a P O that night if you wanted me to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd like that.
I was just gonna say, I mean, because the, you know, the challenge is those kids have gone through that gym being, it's I think one of the smallest gyms of all of our high schools. It's in, you know, they've dealt with it because we hoped to have had them have a new gym by now. And with that not being the immediate case, we've gotta do something there. And if we can limit the amount of time that the students would not have a gym, and I, and if Dr. Connors is willing to work with a timeframe in there, then as soon as we can get a bid. When, I was gonna say, is there any way we could have even a special meeting? I mean, I don't have a problem coming in if three, two of other people are willing to come in.
I'm going to Alaska.
Oh, you're gonna do that?
Alaska.
You're a basketball player.
I was gonna say, that's right, yes, that's right, Ms. Powers is a really good basketball player, don't people forget that? You need to have that on your resume.
Oh, we have to.
She can, I was gonna say.
I'm not a basketball person, just so you know.
Well, you know, the Boston Gardens, they used to back out that old floor of the Boston Gardens where they had the spots that were a little uneven.
That's right.
Where they bounce a ball, you know, like, do they still have the park, that same parkway before they bring to the new garden?
For that very same reason, because it would be, it was challenging to the other players.
Right.
The very first basketball game I coached, Chris Reddell, I think, game called out to the man from the bathroom.
It was like a Super Bowl.
I grew up for Houston.
And over, and over this metal, they used it as a support tube, and it was disastrous.
Very much middle school school?
With the-
If we could make with that plastic-
Yeah, it was disastrous.
That was the big trend back then.
Yeah. What is super?
You know, maybe the third week in July, we could, I, I don't know, how about if the July 9th board meeting, we can kind of regroup, I won't be here, but somebody can tell you.
Oh, well then we could definitely do it, because we'll just say, Mr. Walker's not here, but he said we could do it.
Well, I mean, maybe Danny can tell you, hey, listen, we can have this to you, because right, we'll never make it for the July board meeting, it just won't work.
Well, let us know, because if we, if there is a way, I mean, even if we just needed to come in to do that, I don't have a problem doing that to get that done. And Ms. Powers was saying, you know, she'd be willing to.
Absolutely.
And I've gotta come the farthest.
I know Ms. Brian would be here.
No, she's gonna be-
I'm going to Alaska.
She would be here, I'm sure.
It would be really long distance.
Daniel, it's your piece.
I'm glad though that you, you're, you're doing.
Me too.
It was a great idea, someone told me to, to take care of it.
Mr. Walker went with it.
Yes.
Fall and bottom was pit there.
I'm telling you, you'll fall in that one crack.
Okay, so the capital plan really essentially has not changed, if you want me to go through the details, I will. Okay.
I got it.
But, I mean, the bottom line is we still have work to do.
Your copier lease, it looks like you're still continuing to, you do a real good job at keeping those leases down.
Well, renewed it, we saved a million dollars over five years.
That's a, thank you. We'll find a way of spending it, I'm sure.
So we will, in the July meeting, I won't be here, but we'll have an agenda request for you to approve the advertisement of the budget. Now, we come back for the budget on July 30th. Typically, we'll just bring through the documents and the script or anything to approve the tentative budget. Do you want me to go back through a workshop with you on that day, or are you comfortable with just approving the tentative budget?
Well, we've got one person missing and possibly two persons missing. So I, I don't know, I mean, I think we're comfortable.
Yeah, I was gonna say-
And all you need is a vote of three, never mind, yeah, we're comfortable.
So, Miss Simmel will just bring the documents to approve the tentative budget, which will be at the 5:30 public hearing.
All right.
Right, knowing that we can access you with questions if you'd love to talk about.
And there may be some other people with questions.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm going to adjourn the workshop.
I have a question for four members.
Okay.
Here are my notes, okay? We're gonna bring back you and compare our TOSA versus assistant principals dollar wise.
Dollar wise.
And also, because you know that they cannot do evaluations if they're not in the field, but we'll bring back $100 to you, just so you'll see that, okay? We're gonna bring back to you all in the future workshop, the elementary and middle school staffing plans with the days and the TOSA slash technology media, how it could be turned into Title I rather than off of $100. For, when I say next school year, I'm talking about one after, one after July 1st, okay? And we're gonna look at our support position, how can you make it? We're gonna look at our support positions through attrition or eliminating them for our next school budget, if we don't have that done, okay? And then we wanna bring back to you some data on the quarter mild to take out to the voters, to see if that's what you wanna do. This will, may, probably won't be the July workshop, but maybe the following workshop.
I don't know if this creates any savings, and I don't think it does, but there was a, I think somewhere in the, one of the workshops and conversations, there was, about providing you a, like a bucket of days for each school, and bringing everybody back to, I think it was $196, oh, $196, I'm sorry. If that hasn't been done, that may be something to do at the same time. And again, it may not even be that it's a dollar, but it's, it's the right time to, I think, incorporate all of those pieces together.
Or until there was to give the faculty plans back to the principals, and let them look at how many days they may say, we can all, every level could do without five extra days. And just give them that pot of days, and then they use them as they see fit.
And I say that because that ties into that, that TOSA specialist, and that whole piece in there of those days and so forth, so. Because that, that may be that if, let's say the media specialist is the one they want as their TOSA specialist, but there was five days they needed, well, they could still have that available.
The assessment specialist may need the days this year and another position then. So maybe technology needs it this year because of the one-on-one and the assessment, you know, so they would have some flexibility.
And we can send them to receive the staffing plan after it's gone through that process. That is the staffing plan that's been thoroughly reviewed at the school side and has sent us as their final thoughts on it.
Correct. All right. Is there any other things that need come in the workshop? I can adjourn, we will adjourn the workshop, and we will open the special meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent.
I move to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Do we have any citizens' comments? Seeing none? Ms. Bishop, you're up.
Good morning, I wanna pass out to you, this is the most recent addition of the board there.
Okay.
It's hiring time.
That's right.
Thank you, sir.
Some really good hires on here too.
Yes, there is.
So I'd like to request the approval of the board, the board's approval on the instructional support recommendations that's outlined on the most recent bulletin out there.
All right, just give us a couple minutes, look at this stuff we added.
Yeah, I'm excited about it.
I move to approve the, the, let's see, instructional hiring.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Powers, and a second by Mr. Candy, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
I'd like to request the approval of Laura Aguilera, Assistant Principal for the 12-month position of Citrus High School effective July, July 1st, 2013.
Where is that, I'm sorry? Oh, there it is, I move approval of Laura Aguilera for Assistant Principal, 12 months of Citrus High School effective July 1st, 2013.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Powers. We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries three zero.
Mr. Bishop, when I made the motion for the first one, I left out the word support, so I probably need to also make a motion for the support person.
Yes, no, that's correct.
So if I may, I'd like to approve the support recommendations in addition to the instruction recommendations.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Aye, carries again.
I'd like to request the approval of the board to approve Phil McLeod, Assistant Principal of Citrus High School effective July 1st, 2013.
I move approval. We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries three zero.
I'd like to request the approval of Amy Crowell, Assistant Principal of Citrus Springs Elementary School, effective July 1st, 2013.
Amy Crowell is Assistant Principal of Citrus Springs Elementary, well, I happily move to approve that.
And I enthusiastically second that.
We have a motion and a second, we have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries three zero.
My son's fourth grade teacher, and I'm so excited for that school.
I'd like to request approval of Sharon Lowe, Assistant Principal of Central Ridge Elementary School, effective July 1st, 2013.
I move approval of Sharon Lowe, Assistant Principal of Central Ridge Elementary School, effective July 1st, 2013.
A second. All those in favor? Aye.
And I'm excited about that, I know Ms. Lowe's been working hard towards that.
Also like to request approval of Assistant Principal of Homocentric Elementary School, Sandra Sonberg, effective July 1st, 2013.
I move approval.
Second.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I thought you were still working on it.
I taught Sandra in the fifth grade 100 years ago, and she was taller than me then, and she's still taller than me, so. This is great, that's why I'm, that's why I jumped in there.
She was a bear cannon?
Oh, yes.
Was a bear cannon?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Oh, wow, really?
Oh, yes. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We don't have an attorney with any legal matters?
He friends when I give the legal class.
Uh-oh. Mr. Mullin, do you have anything for us? Ms. Powers?
No, I don't, just say my grandchildren down visiting, having a great time.
Cool.
No, just that I spent a week on roofs, putting new roofs on a mission trip, and I just have to say, I had kids from all of our different schools, but in particular from Crystal River High and La Canto High School. The Crystal River High kids were tended to be the roofing kids, they stripped roofs and re-put on new roofs. And La Canto supplied our artists, who drew masterpieces, literally masterpiece size, for this camp. And they looked unbelievable. So it's hard for me not to dote on about how great our students are.
I know your picture.
Good.
Good.
I've got a couple, a couple things. I wanna remind all of us that our report to the Commission on Ethics is due July 1st, if you haven't done it, do it. If you talk with Ms. Deutschman, remind her. Okay? Florida School Boards Association, I was elected to the Board of Directors again. In, in your absence, I'm just letting you know this. And- Becky Watson spoke to us. Becky Watson grew up in Orange County, and she was homeless. And she's now a teacher. And she was homeless for like, I don't know, six or seven years, and then moved in with a grandmother along with another family. So like three families living in a two-bedroom house, she was no longer homeless. But she talked about Ruby Payne, she had some Ruby Payne stuff there, excellent, excellent speaker. But anyway, Becky Watson, and she now teaches in Orange County. She's got a master's degree, she has four children, and she's severely middle-class now. But for the longest time, she was not, and she understands poverty. We need to too. I put in the cost wishlist, and I know we're not Orange County, but it's right there on top. Mr. But that's, that's it, no, 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 that, that's it, that's it. I know we're not Orange County, so we don't have at our disposal all the things they have, but perhaps we may have something that we can use to raise money around here. And I leave that with you for your consideration.
Thought this was good, because I've seen these, these cards before, and some of these other ones, that businesses. I, I think any and all of these things are, are options we ought to look at.
All right.
I really do, I was actually pleased, I was wondering who gave this to us, because-
That would have been me.
It's fine, I appreciate it, because I do think these are, are excellent, excellent options.
And it was a fairly good, it was a fairly good meeting that I, that I attended.
Some of these, I think we do now, like name rights, I think, I think do we not do that as part of a contract that we provide for like the high schools? Where they can, certain companies can print stuff up and we, we get a certain revenue off of?
Oh, you mean like when they sell the CHS t-shirt at Walgreens and that sort of thing?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Well, yes, there's contracts you can get to make sure that happens.
Didn't we have an issue with that, with us at Citrus, our Crystal River High School, a long time ago, about, about competing with private industry or something, I remember, but-
No, this-
Just do it.
No, in La Canto.
No, this is when a private, this is when a private sector comes in and brings a t-shirt and sells it to the private industry out, out throughout the community.
Like the Walmarts and Walgreens.
Walmart and Walgreens or something, then you go in and see a t-shirt says Citrus High School.
Oh, I see, it wasn't done.
Our schools are supposed to get revenue from that.
Oh, that's another school.
There's always a contract in it.
Okay, that's all I have, you have anything, Miss Simmel?
You know what, I'm looking through this, and it talks about online advertising, would you all be interested if we, there was some group that came to us about selling advertisements for our website? I mean, would anybody, are you all for that, against that, you wanna talk about it? There's a lot of restrictions when it comes to, we've even got policy guidelines in place that, you know, that's real restrictive of who can advertise anywhere in our district. So I don't know if that's something you'd want us to explore.
I'll tell you, the, the thing that would be interesting about exploring some of that would be, I'll just select ones, like Presenta Skyward. And some of those companies that we, you know what I mean, that actually are our vendors, that we could find ways of offsetting some of those costs or recouping some of that. And we have some of those controls that they meet our policies, and I don't see why not now. Some of the other ones, like you said, I don't know that I wanna get into a rolling advertising.
I'm for exploring it.
But I'm for exploring any of those.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I, I usually don't like the advertising such as that, because it just opens the door that I wouldn't want to open. There's many who can advertise on what, that will get a first name and a father or something, I got questions.
We have to, we're strict laws.
I do not want it on our buses. That's all I know, I don't want anything to distract from our buses, but online, why not?
I mean, we look into it, it's a dumb deal, we can track it down.
Well, the ones, and that's why I was thinking like- Well, the ones, and that's why I was thinking like, for example, because I think it already meets certain things of our policy of educational purposes, and that's why I was thinking like a Skyward, and some of those, Skyward just isn't one, it doesn't mean that they would, but I'm just thinking that those that are services that we already use, we have, some of the software companies that we use for our products and things, they offer, I know, home services as well.
Boys have vendors too, that may always order at all times.
All right. Anything else needs to come before the board? I made Ms. adjourned.
I know, I got my.